Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Dutchess County IDA to order. Jasmine, could you please take a roll call of the board?
Chairman Dean?
Present.
Kathy Power?
Here.
Mark Doyle?
Yeah.
Jamie Pacoan?
Here.
Don Sagliano?
Present.
Amy Bombardieri? Al Torjani?
Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum, correct Sarah?
Correct.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to mention is that we do have a conflict of interest policy. And if there's anybody on the board who has a conflict of interest with this project in any way, I'd appreciate it if you'd let us know and we'll recuse you. And I will state for the record that Al Torjani, who is one of our board members, has disclosed the conflict as his company key is providing quotations to the project. So he is not present today. Is there anybody else that might have a conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none, just to confirm that there was a proof of meeting notice posted, is that correct?
Yes, proof of meeting notice was posted on February 25th.
Okay, great. There's nothing else on the agenda. I'm going to move right to new business. And Sarah, would you like to kick this off?
Sure, I think it'll be a joint effort between me and Liz. But in front of us, in front of the board today is members of USEF, of the USEF Amazon project. They are requesting a amendment to our standard agreements as it relates to assignment of the building. So while other IDAs in New York State allow assignment without prior board approval, our documents as written do require the property owner to come in front of the board for prior board approval for assignment. So what we are asking the board, USEF has asked the board to consider terms to allow for assignment without prior board approval with certain conditions. If all conditions apply, and those conditions include the facility would have to be completed and Amazon would have to be the tenant. The job numbers agreed upon in our agreements would have to remain. The tenant would have to be, would remain Amazon. There's no additional request or extension of any benefits. The remaining terms of the agreement stay in place. And the new signee will certify that they have the financial capability and experience to run such facility. And then they would also have proof that, oh, that's proof of qualification. So with that, I'm going to hand that over to Liz to fill in the blanks.
Before Liz, before you start, I just wanted to acknowledge that Amy Bombardieri has joined us in the discussion. Amy is a board member. Amy, just to be clear, do you have any conflict of interest with the matter at hand for us?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead Liz.
Liz, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
She's been on mute.
How about now? Looks like the microphone is off.
Volume.
The volume?
Okay, looks like she's having a problem. So, but I can, as a pinch hitter, I can try. The, there are two matters. We thought that the rest of the changes that you had seen, they're just what we would call not substantive changes, the kinds of things we do in every case where there's some negotiation of minor issues relating to an agreement. And you've authorized the executive director to sign an agreement with those kinds of minor changes. They've asked for essentially two. In the past, we have provided for, with the documents that you originally approved, related parties to, an assignment to related parties. And in this particular case, the owner would like to have that. But it was not asked for before the final approval, approving resolution. So we thought it best to come back to include that provision so that the board could approve that as well. In addition, here though, they're talking about wanting to, as the developer, they're coming in and the focus of this entire approval process has been the tenant. And so they want a limited right to assign to a third party under specific circumstances. One is this, and this is for an unrelated entity. So related entities, if they're related, then we consider those under IRS rules to be not a particular problem. But this, for unrelated entities, they're asking for the right to do that first after the project has been completed and remains a project at the time they make the assignment. Secondly, amazon.com services LLC or a related party to Amazon remains as a tenant. And third, the new entity certifies it has the financial capability and experience to take over the lease agreement. And fourth, that the IDA is notified of the assignment. This would, you know, they're coming in, the developer claims they want to come in to actually build the building, they found the tenant, they have everything ready. Once everything's teed up and underway, and you now have this tenant that you're really providing the benefits to, under those circumstances, they would say that perhaps another company might be more appropriate to then run the landlord-tenant relationship under those circumstances. And that's essentially the change that they're asking the board to approve.
So to be clear, that at the time of potential transfer of the title, no benefits would be extended further than the originally extended benefits, correct?
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. Does any, does anybody, board member have any questions in regards to this resolution? Don Sagliano?
Thank you Chairman Dean. I have a few questions. I'm referring to the resolution, supplemental authorizing resolution. And on page two of it, in the top, whereas, it speaks about financial assistance, improvement, quality equipment, company facility. I don't see in this resolution where it identifies the company. Somebody point that out to me?
Well, the company, the company is on the bottom of page one, under the recitals. The last, whereas, USEF Tiaranda LLC is the company.
I don't see it in, I have in front of me, Council Capolino, a supplemental authorizing resolution that's stamped draft.
I'm sorry, I'm looking.
And then it speaks to a special meeting, it says it's present. And then there's a resolution in bold of the IDA, et cetera. And it doesn't, it speaks about, in the first whereas on the top of page two, it defines what financial assistance is because it's bold. It defines what the land is because it's bolded. I don't see where it identifies the actual underlying company.
Yeah, I misspoke.
Resolution.
I misspoke. The, I was looking at the underlying documents themselves. The documents themselves, which have been included in your packet, you know, clearly identify who the company is. The company is USEF Tiaranda LLC Delaware LLC. And so I was reading from any of the attached documents, the equipment lease agreement defines their definitions. And the originally, this is a supplemental resolution that supplements the originally approved resolution. And clearly, all along, the company, the applicant is USEF Tiaranda LLC.
Okay, so there's no need to put that in there parenthetically for the reader?
But, you know, if you would like to make a clarification for the record, that's fine. But the documents that are referred to in the underlying, in the resolution are in fact clear on the definition of who the company is. And the company is the applicant.
And what exactly, and where exactly in the attached documents that you're referring to, does it speak to the meaning of what our resolution is contemplating?
The what? I missed that last word.
Okay, so there's a resolution to make a modification to the underlying agreements that were adopted last month, right? And then there's all these attachments, like you indicated, you know, the equipment lease, et cetera. Where is the reference to what the action is within the underlying documents for what we're contemplating?
Well, these are.
Can you hear me yet?
Yeah, we can hear it.
Okay. So Liz Capolino here, so it's section 9.3 of the equipment lease agreement and the lease agreement where the assignment provisions have been revised. But what the resolution is providing is that you're approving the form of the documents, this second set of documents that's being submitted. But specifically, it's section 9.3 on assignment and subleasing that we're looking for, that would require additional board approval.
Okay, that, it looks like that's on page 26, is that accurate?
26 and carrying over into page 27, correct?
Okay.
And page, I'm looking at page two of four in the one before us. At the bottom, it does say it references the authorizing resolution, lease and project agreement dated January 1st, 2021. And goes on to, you know, define that that's about equipment lease agreement and lease agreement. It does reference those.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, pose a question is, is what is the necessity for this amendment with respect to specifically this project and any future projects? And what recourse does the agency have, the IDA, if there is a, is there a default or a defect within any of the agreements moving forward? Because this is an unrelated concern as indicated. And I just have some questions as to why it would have to be an unrelated concern and how that all impacts the arrangement with the sales tax exemption and the payment of those taxes.
So I'll make a general comment, but then I'm going to ask Sarah to, and perhaps our counsel to comment. It is, our IDA is probably in, on the probably exception side in regards to these types of agreements. In many IDA lease pilot agreements and sales tax agreements, the right to assign to unrelated parties is often included in the original documents. So it just allows a owner to sell their property at some point during the term of a pilot agreement while preserving all of the original rights that we have when we approve the project with the original owner. So to my mind, the only thing that we would want to be concerned about different than when we were negotiating with an original owner would be the financial abilities of the new owner to continue to honor the original agreement. And it sounds to me that there is wording in this, this particular amendment that does require that the, if there's going to be a sale to an unrelated third party, that they have to be able to prove their ability to, to continue to maintain the project as it was originally outlined. So I'm going to suggest that after we get through this special amendment for this lease, that at a future meeting, the board consider a revision to our general template to allow for this type of, you know, sale of a project in all circumstances with the qualification of a capable buyer. The reason I say that is because it would not, in my mind, be uncommon when we're doing a 15 or 20-year or a 10-year pilot for there to be times when, just as normal course of business, a project is sold. And I don't, I don't think that's necessarily a detriment in any way to our mission. But Sarah, did you want to comment on that at all?
So just to build on what you're saying is that in this, you know, situation and features that this is a tenant-owner situation. And so the tenant is really what substantiates the project. And the owner is, again, just the owner of the property. So the project itself is, the terms are ensuring that the project, which is the tenant in this case, remains and remains. That is the definition of the project. And then that the owner does have the ability to negotiate with potential qualified owners without having additional terms in that negotiation occur. The IDAs, the IDA always has the ability to terminate the agreement with any of its projects if they feel that the terms of the agreement have not been held by the company. So, and that this could happen in this case is that if the IDA feels that the company does not, is not upholding, upholding the terms and the conditions that this IDA has the right to terminate the agreement.
Yeah, and I would just like to add, and finally, you have buildings that have been vacant for 20 years. This developer is coming in and then demolishing those buildings and then building a new facility. And that facility has to be completed before any kind of, any kind of transfer takes place, any kind of assignment takes place. So with that, and then with the tenant being also a responsible tenant, the, all the sales tax and mortgage tax aspects of this are taken care of on the front end as they build the building and complete it. After that, the remaining benefit is the pilot. And that's really for the benefit of the tenant. So the tenant needs to be assured that it's going to continue. So they need to make sure that under the tenant compliance agreement, they have the obligation to remain a project. So with all of that, I think we're adequately covered.
Okay, so I have a further question is, is upon the event of a potential transfer of the interest within this property to an unrelated party, is that, does there requirement of the IDA to be a signatory to that, sign off on it, be a party to the transfer? Is there any reason why we would or wouldn't be?
Yeah, in this particular case, that, they don't, they're asking that they not have to come back to the board for that approval as long as they meet the condition set forth. And that's really the difference here, and that's what they're asking for. So the IDA would not be a party to that, would just be a notice party. They would receive notice that this is occurring.
So the IDA has no requirement to evaluate the financial stability and/or representations of a potential transfer in this regard?
No, we'll have the certification of the assinee.
I would also say that we have, we retain all of the rights that we have in the original agreement as far as compliance with our rules and regulations.
Okay, Council Capolino, you broke up at the end of your statement before Chairman Dean spoke. I didn't quite hear the full statement that you made there.
I'm not, I'm not sure what I.
The question, well, Don, do you want to restate your question, just to be clear?
I understand the question though. If I make him restate it and tell me. You stated, you just want to know whether or not the IDA has any involvement, whether they're required to approve the assinee in advance.
Jasmine, can you close your mic or, thank you?
And there is no such requirement, that's the difference here. They're not asking, in our standard agreements, the assinee has to be approved by the board in advance of the assignment. That's not taking place here. Instead, we have the certification by the assinee that they are financially capable of handling the project. But as the chairman indicated, the focus of this is really the tenant. And the tenant is the beneficiary, after the project is built, the tenant is the beneficiary of the pilot agreement. And that pilot agreement is what continues after the buildings have been constructed.
And what form and content is the certification contained? Is that something that is already preformed? Is it a template? And what representations would that, would be included upon that certification?
Well, we just need a certification and we can, while we don't have the actual form of the certification completed, it will be something, a certification is a statement under oath that they, that they are financially capable of handling the project. But if you're, if you're looking for financials or something of that nature, where, or amount of experience or things of that nature, financial capability and experience to take the lease agreement. And, you know, that would be, you know, that is the factor, that's what they have to provide.
And is that certification required before transfer or after transfer? Is that certification made to the executive director? And does the executive director have any need to provide any due diligence?
Well, the answer to that is, it would, it would be provided at the time that they are performing the, for the assignment to be valid, then it needs to, it has to be, they have to have financial capability and experience. And if the review by the executive director determines that it's not, then it is a violation of the lease and project agreement, and it's a breach.
Okay, and then, then that would commence any recapture or removal of benefits or?
Exactly.
So there is, so in retrospect from our discussion, there is a form and content to this process to provide, you know, to minimize the exposure of the IDA, the board, Dutchess County, et cetera, the locality, the district. And Chairman Dean mentioned that we're kind of, we're one of the IDAs that doesn't unilaterally provide this in its template documents. So is that accurate that other local IDAs throughout New York State would already have had this opportunity in there to potential applicants? With this right of transfer?
Who are you directing that at?
Either, either.
Sarah or Don?
Yes, Sarah, I guess, or?
So yeah, so, so there are other IDAs where this is part of their, you know, their agreement. They do allow, do allow this to happen. It's just in our agreements, it's been our practice to require prior board approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And to be clear, you know, as I mentioned, that's for future discussion. We don't have to adopt it in our template. We can continue to do it on an as-needed basis as we are today with the ability to ask good questions like you've asked. So thank you, Don. Any other board questions?
If I might ask Mark Doyle? In the course of this discussion, I've been looking for a specific reference to the conditions as it relates to the ability of the signee to take ownership of the property, that we've just been talking about, their financial and their experience. And wasn't able to actually find that in the document. Could you, would counsel be able to point me to that?
So let me, I'm going to attempt to answer that for Don. And this is, you know, a follow-up to Don's questions as well. The, the requirement would be a statement under oath that the financial abilities of the buyer, you know, would, would allow them to comply with the agreement. There is no specific templated document that's in the agreement that would be used as a, you know, a guideline. Don, is that correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
I'm sorry though, I'm simply, I'm looking for the language that states that requirement in the.
Sure, it's under, sorry if you don't mind, Mark, the language under section 9.3 of the lease agreement where it says assignment and subleasing, if you look to subsection A and then below that subsection two, it says the S and E shall assume the obligations of the company hereunder and certify that it has the financial capability and experience required to perform such obligations. So it's page 30, 37 of the lease agreement into 38.
Okay, I was looking at.
You were looking at the actual, the new amendment, which is, references back to that, so.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
This is Kathy. I'm looking at the equipment lease agreement, article eight, section 8.1, the right to inspect. I noticed in here that during construction period, it says that we have to provide reasonable notice and reasonable time to do any inspections. After that, once the construction has been completed, we are allowed to inspect once during the first six months. And then it goes further down to state that inspections should not occur more than once in 12 consecutive months over like a 24-month period and not during fourth quarter. And I wanted to make sure that Marilyn will be able to do the inspections that we have to do and she'll be able to gather the information to ensure that we're in compliance with New York State for any of our reporting.
So, so this is Sarah. So the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
And that does not preclude us, that's, I'm assuming, physical inspections. It does not preclude the, you know, receiving and requesting of any kind of documents that we need, you know, during the year as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to thank each of the board members who have asked questions today. I think I really appreciate your diligence and I encourage you all to continue. It is a good indication that everybody is reading carefully the documents that are put before us. And, you know, it's great to hear our questions. So thank you. Is there, is there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. At this point, I would like to ask if someone would be willing to make a motion to accept the amendment as presented?
I will make a motion to accept the amendment as presented.
Thank you, Mark Doyle. Can I get a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Jamie Pacoan. All right. Jasmine, could you please take a roll call vote of the board members?
Can I answer a clarification? This is, this is a motion to. Can I answer a clarification? This is, this motion to approve the supplemental resolution.
Okay, so I apologize for my reference. Mark, do you still maintain your motion?
As stated by counsel, yes, please.
Thank you. Jamie, do you still second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Jasmine, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Don Sagliano?
In favor?
Jamie Piccone?
Approve.
Amy Bandadiri?
Pardon?
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Mark Doyle?
Approve.
Tim Dean?
Approve. Okay, the, the motion has passed. Is there anything else, Sarah, that we need to discuss this morning?
So, no, no, nothing to discuss this morning. Just a quick announcement is that the regular scheduled March 10th meeting has been canceled and a, or rather postponed to Friday, March 19th.
Okay, so, John?
Yes, hi. Before you adjourn your meeting, I'd just like to, on behalf of USEF, Amazon, Bluewater Property Group, just like to thank the chairman, all the members of the board, and Sarah, and Don, and Liz. This, for us, is a very timely day, and we know that for all of you, it was not a planned day. And so we want to thank you for holding the special meeting and changing your schedules to adopt a schedule that will allow us to close on Friday and start construction on Monday. This has been, you know, an enormous undertaking to get this project from the point where we were, say, in August, which was looking at a, a site that had a lot of complexity to it based on how it was redeveloped, or how it was, had been developed. And for redevelopment, there are a lot of issues and things that we had to work through, which we could not have done without the, the cooperation of, of a lot of people. And we, we had a great collaborative effort with everybody at the town level and everybody at the, at the county level. And that extends very much to all of you. When we first talked with Sarah about this in, in August, and we had a map out this timeline, it was all geared about getting Amazon into the building by the middle of 2022, which really requires us to be in the ground literally tomorrow. And when we laid out this, this timeline, it was not a convenient timeline. I don't think that lined up with, with all regular scheduled meetings that allowed us to dovetail it. But Sarah worked with us very well, and all of you did, every month, every step of the way, to help make this project a success in terms of getting it approved. Our job is now to get it built and to get Amazon in the building, and we fully intend to do that starting on Monday. So I just want to thank everybody very much. We, we very much appreciate all your time and efforts.
And I just want to add real quick for the record, that's, for those on the phone, that was John Decola of Bluewater.
Thank you, John, and we look forward to, you know, the economic benefits that derive from this project, both from its construction as well as its occupancy by Amazon, and what that does for our region. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to adjourn the special meeting, and I look forward to seeing everybody at our next meeting as, as mentioned by Sarah. So the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks.